Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call the West Covina City Council meeting to order. This is Tuesday, September 17th, the regular meeting of the city council. We will start tonight with our invocation. I'd like to call forward Reverend Susan Offler of the West Covina United Methodist Church. Susan, please rise.
All right, that is great. Almighty God, Creator and Redeemer, you have charged us with the responsibility of caring for your world and this community that we call home. Some of us come with specific agendas that are filled with emotions, while others just want the meeting to end quickly regardless of the outcome. We all come hoping for the best possibilities for all of our communities where we find it difficult to accept one another and their views. May I ask to pause, to breathe deep, and call upon your grace and guidance? Help us to remember the impact of our decisions affect many holy gods. Bless this meeting, that it may be all that is hoped for and rise above personal agendas to a unified body that seeks your guidance. Open our minds to the needs of the community, that we will find ways to create peaceful and loving situations. Open our ears to hear the deeper concerns behind smaller issues, so that justice can be heard. Open our hearts to your love, so we can treat one another with respect and kindness. Thank you, O God, for this opportunity to care for your people and your world in the name of the one who gives us life. Amen.
Amen. Please join with me in our pledge to the flag.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, yesterday our country was attacked in Washington DC at a naval base by some terrorists and thereby actually a deranged individual. I'd like to ask us to take a moment of silence to think about the men and women that protect our country, the heroes, those that have lost their lives needlessly, and just think how fortunate we are that we live in a country where we have the freedoms to move about freely and to express ourselves and the people that defend those rights. So if you will, bow your head in just a moment of silence. Let's keep the families in our thoughts and prayers. Okay, with that, roll call, please.
Mayor Sanderson.
Mayor Sanderson is ill tonight, so she will not be here.
Mayor Protem Herford.
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Here.
Councilmember Satello.
Here.
Councilmember Sykes.
Here.
City manager, report out from closed session.
I'll have Christopher Cardenelli report out from closed session.
Yes, thank you, City Manager. Mayor Protem Herford, members of the city council. Records should reflect that the special session of the city council, special closed session of the West Covina City Council was convened at 6:40 PM. Prior to commencing the closed session, the single agenda item was announced. All city council members were present with the exception of Mayor Sanderson. The sole item discussed and listed on the agenda was conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8 concerning the property located at 2400 South Azusa Avenue. Negotiators on behalf of the city were city staff and Mount San Antonio College on behalf of the LEC. Report was provided by staff with no reportable action taken. An update was provided by staff. I would note for the city council that this matter is also agendized as number five on tonight's agenda and it would be appropriate to entertain further discussion on that item at that time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Changes to the agenda, City Manager?
There are no changes to tonight's agenda. However, there are two items from Mayor Shelley Sanderson and Mother May Eyes on 15 and 16. She did indicate at the council's discretion that you can go ahead and hear those items tonight.
Okay. And for the public's information, item 14, which is the soccer complex which most people, I think, are here for tonight, we will move that up right after oral communications. So we'll deal with that early in the evening. Okay, with that, we have a few presentations, so I'll come down front. I'd like to call forward Cheryl Miller, the Director of Action Food Pantry. Here she goes. She's going to make a presentation to the city council.
Good evening, all. On behalf of the Action Food Pantry, I'm Cheryl Miller. I'm the Director of the Action Food Pantry. This is Bernie Norg. I'm Director of Administration. Bernie is Director of Operations. And the two members behind me, Mary and Marty S. Bradley, are in charge of our computers and our registration system. So we have been recipients of your CDBG grant for a number of years, and we figured it was finally time to let you know what a good job you're doing with us and what we're doing and how we're spending your money. And we're very happy to present you with this certificate of appreciation. Thank you very much for all the support that you've given us.
We really appreciate your service to the community. We know that it's needed out there and you do a terrific job. Thank you. Would you like to say something?
I can't help but take this opportunity that if there is anybody in here that needs food, dial, just dial 211 and ask them about the Action Food Pantry and they'll give you my number.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out. Could I have Shannon Yahtzee, our Public Works Director, please come forward? We have a presentation to make to an employee. Also, I'd like to call down Mr. Mike Wallach. Mike is being recognized for 29 years of service with the city of West Covina. Past several years, Mike has served with Public Works as a city's tree arborist and managed tree maintenance in the urban tree program. And if you drive around town, Mike, it's tremendous what we've done in the last few years. I mean, trees are really doing well. So Shannon, you want to say a few words?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I want to thank Mike for his 29 years of service. Mike started, you know, as sort of almost entry level in the maintenance department and worked his way almost all the way up to the top. Very highly educated. He got his bachelor's degree. He got his master's degree. He got certified as an arborist. He was certified pool person. So, and the trees are looking really good and we're really sorry to see you go, Mike. And at the top of his career, Mike was our contract coordinator overseeing landscape contracts throughout the city, including his specialty, which was the trees. And that's over 33,000 trees that belong to the city. Not only did he just, you know, get the contractor to take care of him, he went out there personally if he needed to water trees, trim branches, care for the trees. And like I said, it's, I'm really sad to see him go. He was really great with customer service. All the time, I got phone calls and letters from the public, you know, thanking Mike for his attitude and coming out there and helping them or helping them plant a tree. And another thing he did all the time was volunteer for the community. Arbor Day, he would volunteer time to help plant trees and put on that program. So, Mike, we're really sorry to see you go, but we wish you the best of luck in your new endeavor.
When I started at maintenance, it was in 1984, and I was the youngest person working there at that time. And I was hoping to retire as the oldest person and maybe on top, but it just didn't work out that way. But I leave the city of West Covina in good hands, and I loved working here. I loved working here every day. And I still have close ties with a lot of people here, and I have made many good friends. And I'll continue those friendships throughout the years.
Mike, on behalf of the city council and the residents of West Covina, this is our city tile that we give to retirees. 29 years, that's great, and you're very young, so I know you're going to have a lot of fun in retirement. And this is a proclamation from the city council. I won't read the whole thing, but thank you so much for everything you've done in your 29 years for the city and beyond. Terrific employee. We're going to miss you. So best of luck. Best of luck. If I could have Robert Bryant from Robert Taylor Florists, please come up. September 11th was Good Neighbor Day, and Robert annually does an event where he gives away roses and you, I think you keep one and you give one to...
You get a dozen.
I'll let him explain it.
Yeah, you get a dozen. You keep one for yourself and you give 11 out to 11 different people. So that happened on September the 11th, but we've done it for 18 years. So we plan on continuing it. So next year, right around the same time, we should be doing it again.
And I don't know of other cities, anybody that does this. I mean, Robert is an institution, I want to say, because we look forward to it every year. And I swung by on my T-shirts and jeans, and I was a mess, but I had my granddaughter, so it was her first experience with it. So on behalf of the city council, Robert, thank you for doing this every year. It really brings in the hometown spirit of our city, and we really do appreciate the effort and having us talk to our friends and give them a nice gift. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Also, I'd like to just add to it that the business that I purchased 20 years ago, it's been in the city of West Covina for 50 years. So we've been helping the city for over 50, 50 years. So it's something I plan on continuing with the city. I love the city. It's a great place to work. So please stop on by. I did bring some roses. Was not expecting half of the city's soccer teams to be here tonight. So we will have them out in the back. I would appreciate it if just the parents or the adults would take them home. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Employees, come on up. right after oral communications. But now we have oral communications. This is a time for the public to address the city council on matters of concern that are on the agenda or aren't on the agenda, but which we can sometimes take action, sometimes not. Anyways, with our first speaker, Mr. John Hughes, please come forward.
Yeah, good evening, members of the council, staff, members of the audience. I'm here tonight to make a presentation to the Community Service Department. I don't know if you're all aware or not, but for 23 years, over 23 years, we've raised money for the Muscular Dystrophy Association. This past year, we've raised over $115,000 and a total in the 23 years of 1.8 hundred thousand million dollars. Now, we have three events that we run, a dinner dance, a golf tournament, and our big 4th of July. How many people have been at our 4th of July celebration? I can't believe it. Not too many hands. Anyway, we had about 20,000 people out there. Anyway, I wanted to make a presentation, if you'd come down, Steve, to Chris Freeland and Marlene. A lot of our events, the 4th of July is done because of the effort by the Community Service Department. And this year was no exception. They've helped me 110% for over 20 years. And so I wanted to make a presentation to them on behalf of the Muscular Dystrophy Association. And here's what it is. This is, that's from one of the children that are suffering. If you give that to Chris. A presentation on thanking them for all of their efforts that we've done. And we've got another event coming up if anybody can help us. We have a Christmas tree, and we need dinners from different restaurants. If you can get any gift certificates and turn them in to the Community Service Department, it will help us raise more money. So anyway, on behalf of the Muscular Dystrophy Association and thanks to the city council, thank you so much, Community Service Department, for all your support. Couldn't be done without you. The 4th of July is such a huge success, and I can't thank you enough. God bless you.
John and his family and the Elks and the Community Services Department, over the last, geez, 23 years now, have raised, what, a million, three?
1.8.
1.8 million dollars for muscular dystrophy. I mean, what a great cause and what a tremendous family effort by the Hughes and our Community Services Department and the Elks Club. I mean, I don't know of any other city around that does anything close to that, but Mr. Hughes, you are a great man. And in the annals of West Covina, I can say that nobody's done more for kids with muscular dystrophy than you and for humankind in general. So thank you for everything you've done for us, okay?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I would also like to congratulate Mr. Hughes on the outstanding efforts he puts forward every year after year tirelessly, without fail, for those kids. A couple of things. Number one, I'm up here tonight to support number eight, which is your resolution opposing the beverage license in LA County at Volinda and Maple Grove. Definitely an oversaturated area right in our neighborhood. Secondly, I'm up here tonight to comment and ask a couple of questions regarding the court action this past week where Mr. Al Hassan pulled a rabbit out of his hat and managed to buy at auction out of bankruptcy his properties here in Covina and West Covina. This, you know, when he declared chapter seven and liquidated and we kind of all thought he was out of the picture, I, for one, was hoping that we would get in a viable dealer operator to take those businesses over and begin to sell cars and contribute to our tax revenue. Our budget is, came in balanced predicated on new car sales coming from a new operator over there. So I'm concerned, you read every day in the paper, that Chevrolets, Fords, Chryslers, Jeeps, Dodges, all these nameplates that he has had control over are selling. And unfortunately, they're not selling in West Covina. So my question is, where do we go from here? Perhaps I can get an answer from the council or city attorney or staff in some manner, but what is the next step for the city of West Covina? We have already invested, spent, whatever you want to call it, untold thousands, up into the millions perhaps, in fighting this litigation. I am concerned that Mr. Al Hassan came up with this company, Deighton America, of which he is the president, and came up with $44 million to purchase these properties out of auction, out of bankruptcy, when he was unable to, you know, pay us what he owed us all these years since about 19, or 2000, or 1999, whatever. My concern is that we are going to go down a slippery slope of continued litigation. We have filed an appeal. What is going to happen down the line? I'm concerned that at the end of the line is going to be him filing bankruptcy with this new company, the same thing repeating itself. We go into another bankruptcy situation, the same thing happens, and he comes up with another company. I mean, really, there's got to be an end to this somewhere. I know, if I can get, I realize we're still involved in litigation, but I think those of us who pay taxes in this community deserve and have a right to know what is being done with our tax dollars vis a vis this property and this litigation. And what happens now? Are we any closer? Is it up to him to sell it to whomever he wants? Does the city have any say? Will we ever have a viable dealership in place in those highly visible, highly valuable properties, selling cars and generating tax revenue for the city, which we all know we desperately need? And I'd appreciate some answers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. City Attorney.
Mayor Protem Herford, members of the city council. As the speaker indicated, this is a pending litigation matter. To the extent the city council would like to comment, I would caution the council from commenting on matters they learned either in closed session or based upon attorney-client communications. Thank you.
Okay. I have a question for you. We have over 20 speaker cards, and that speaker spoke almost five minutes, so that would be quite a bit of time for the children to wait. Is there any rule that would prevent me from calling the soccer speakers first and then calling that item forward? Is that something I could do with protocol?
No, I believe that certainly within the city council's discretion. I believe it'd be appropriate to entertain a motion and then a second on the item in order to take it out of order.
Okay, thank you. And in order for the children that are here tonight to get home, to do schoolwork and be with their families, I'd like to make a motion that we bring forward, actually, we have the oral communication for the soccer agenda item, and then we bring forward that item for the council to discuss. That'll be a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any objections? Okay, 4-0, that will pass. Okay. I've got some cards that have identified themselves as soccer speakers, so I will call those people forward, and then I will ask if there's anybody else that I've missed, because there are some people that didn't specify what the subject topic was. First one is Jim Salais. Please come forward.
Good evening, you all. How are you?
Good.
Not sure where to begin. As you can see, there's a pretty good turnout in terms of our West Covina Youth Soccer League. This is just a small fraction of the families that show up on a weekly basis, and quite frankly, every season, we get a great turnout. And let me kind of back up a little, give you a little history about myself. I've been part of this community for over 20 years, have lived here, owned a home, and have resided here for over 20 years. Love this city. Would love to see a soccer field put up for these kids who have just kind of never had a permanent home, if you will. Not sure how to expand much on that other than I think they really deserve it. They, I don't know if you all have any kids or they're a part of this city and they play within the league, we have a pretty good turnout. We have a pretty good season year after year, and it seems to grow. The sport itself seems to be growing, and I believe that it's time that we actually get a home base for this city league, if you will.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if we could just hold the applause, I'd appreciate it. Jose Jimenez.
Mayor, Mayor Council staff, thank you for adjusting your parliamentary procedures as you ask ahead of time. I really appreciate it. It's, as you can see, we have a lot of kids out here, and we definitely want to get them back to bed, that way they can also finish their homework. But I actually would like to start with a little bit of a story, if you don't mind, and if you please don't mind indulging me a bit. It has to do with me when I was in eighth grade. I went to a private institution, not in the city, actually, it was in Los Angeles. And around that time, the local high school came to us as kind of part of their recommendations of a series of schools that we should attend as we proceeded to high school. And the one high school we were interested in did not have a football field, so the school would market itself as, "Kids, come to our school, you will be the first team to set foot on that football field." Hearing that story, I signed up. I went. It became apparent probably at the second year that that field was not going to happen. I was a bit devastated because we were basically from that point on a traveling team with no home. And that's kind of what I see with the league at the moment. We're a traveling league that goes from school to school on the weekends in residential neighborhoods, next to residential homes, sometimes intruding on the privacy of those neighbors because obviously we have a lot of excited kids. They love kicking the ball around. They love being part of the community. But unfortunately, we're right now moving from location to location. Tonight's recommendation talks about discussions back from 2008. That's five years ago. I would like to see that recommendation not take another five years before we see something happening at Orange Wood. I think these kids deserve it. I don't want to see another five years go by that they don't get their field. I think we owe it to them. We want to grow with the community, but most importantly, we want to stay in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Contreras? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm coming here to speak on the soccer issue as well, and just to give you, I might reiterate a couple of things that people have been saying, but I wanted to come forth because this is something that has been on the books for a long time in West Covina, getting a soccer field for the kids. My children, who are now 35 and 34, started in West Covina youth soccer. They grew up, and since then, when they were small, starting at the age of five, we have always hassled with soccer locations. Where are we playing this year? Where are we playing this season, this fall season, the spring season? We've never had a permanent home. Now, my granddaughter is here. She's playing in the league, and I would love for her to have a permanent home. It's unfair to these kids. They're all the next generation that's coming up. For them not to have a soccer location... not to have a soccer location, for them to be able to kick that ball around, for them to be able to say, "Hey, you know what? We are proud of West Covina, they are giving us a soccer field, our home, somewhere that we could call." I've seen money go to baseball fields, to hockey rinks, to a lot of different organizations that the money just seems to go that way and that way, and soccer is always forgotten. I think now is the time for West Covina to step up and give these kids a soccer home. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Sabata.
Hello, my name is Andrea Sabata, and I'm part of the U-15 Girls for the Club West Covina South Hills. Today, we are here to discuss the idea of expanding and renovating new fields for soccer. Many of the fields we have used in the past were either too crowded, the fields were horrible, causing injuries for our players, there were no lights to play in, or sometimes we had been kicked out of those fields. These fields are our only resource of becoming better players individually and as a team, especially since we are currently in Coast, one of the biggest tournaments for soccer. Just as any other team here, we have a lot of dedication for playing our favorite sport, and that's soccer. Soccer is the biggest sport in West Covina in both recreational and club, but where will we practice at? We, as a club, need a home field. I'm also talking for the kids in recreation as well, because that's where we all started. We need a home where we can depend on, where we won't get kicked out. We need a home we can go to anytime and practice at, and won't be interfered by other sports. We need a home where we can bring other cities to come in and play with us, in West Covina, and be proud of both our city and our fields. Thank you for listening, and I know you're going to make an impact, not only for my future, but for these kids as well.
Thank you. Very well spoken. Thank you. Elsie Messman.
Council, staff, and everyone here tonight, my name is Elsie Messman, and I'm a resident of West Covina. Excuse me. I'm here to speak on Article 14 on the Agenda. It appears that another pet project is being legally challenged. This would not have happened if the council majority had voted for what was in the best interest of the community instead of a personal agenda. The project, Orange Wood Park Soccer Complex, was started in 2007. This is 2013, and nothing has been done. And by the way, Councilman Sotelo, you were on the Planning Commission at that time, and you approved it. At one of the council meetings, Councilman Sotelo said he might have made a mistake in voting for the Hill, but you voted for the San Bernardino Road Development also, with 117 signatures turned in and the people speaking to oppose this project. Two wrongs don't make a right. Maybe if you had to pay the attorney fees, then you would think twice about it.
Excuse me, City Council, I'd like to remind the Speaker to address the City Council as a whole. Thank you.
What you are doing is nothing less than electioneering.
Excuse me, Madam Speaker, you need to address the City Council in its entirety. Thank you.
The Orange Wood Park Soccer Complex has been in the books since 2007, and there has been many projects done in this city to get the money for this project. All of a sudden, you want to make 117 people look bad, since the San Bernardino Development is being legally challenged, and this is where the money was to come from. Give me a break. It's interesting, you voted for a one-year moratorium on 79 homes that could bring in millions of dollars to this city compared to the San Bernardino Development. Did you not see this, or is someone telling you what to do? If the job, you are to represent, everybody here is to represent the residents of the city, not developers and their friends. And oh, by the way, I have a copy of the project that already, they spent $97,000 for this project, for the design plans and construction. Is this ever going to, or did we outgrow the green in this park, or what happened? But I think it's about time that you guys looked into this park instead of spending money elsewhere. Thank you.
Just so we're all on the same page here, in 2007 and '08, we undertook a study to potentially bring a soccer field to West Covina. One of the things you have to do is to change the master plan for the park, and you have to come up with a concept and a plan, and we did that. And we told the city residents at the time that when the funding is available, we will bring the item forward. Recently, we had Lennar Homes come into the city by Edwards Theater. They're going to be building a 450-unit condo complex, which creates park development fees. That brings in over $3.5 million to the city of West Covina. That is the economic engine that will build the soccer field. So to criticize the council for being negligent, it really isn't. We planned for this, now the money's here, so we will move forward with it. So I disagree with the discussion that just happened. Soccer Fields, John Shoemaker.
Here's a comment that I found on a document within the city. The City Council created a soccer field subcommittee to address the need for additional soccer fields. Based on their findings, the council authorized staff to initiate an amendment to the Orange Wood Park Master Plan to address soccer fields. This project is to construct soccer fields per design specifications in Park Master Plan, dated 2003. In 2008, it was repeated. In 2013, it's, "Let's do it all over again." If you review the budgets since at least 2003, you'll always see, "Let's plan for this right after the election and build it next year." Next election comes up, "Let's plan for this after the next election and do it the following year." And it goes over and over and over. We just had a member of the council state, "One of the reasons they can't build it is because we don't have the money." Well, I went back and took a look. In 2003, we had $57 million in reserves, and we couldn't find $1.2 million to give to the soccer people. In 2004, we still had well over $50 million in reserves. We could not find $1.2 million to give to the soccer kids. In 2008, we still had millions of dollars in reserves. Heck, even two years ago, we had $29 million in reserves, but we could not find $1.2 million to give to the kids that play soccer in our community. So I'm looking at it, saying, you know, we've had all these reserves, let's do something in 2013 for them. Let's take money out of the reserves. Oh, that's right, we don't have anymore. It's all gone. So they say, "Well, we want to take the funds for the San Bernardino Road Development and give it to the soccer leagues." Well, that looks like that's going to be stopped. But then again, I wonder, there's been money from the Velinda Project, there's been money from Lark Allen Project, you know, is there anything there for them? This is just, you know, it really is, the City Council's sitting here going, you know, "We really, really, really want to do it this time." But, oh, those people stopped the development. Again, to ask what else he said. We stopped $79 million homes going in, that would have brought in a lot of money, that could have gone there. And again, we've been able to, we've had millions of dollars in reserves, we can't find any for the youth soccer leagues, but we can find $2,768,487 to pay for legal fees on cases that we're never going to recoup a cent on. You know, I really hope that you do make it a priority, but for 10 years, 10 consecutive years, it's been, "Next year, next year, next year, next year." And now it's like, "Well, we want to do it, just like we told you we wanted to do it the previous 10 years, but now we can't, because the development we were going to use doesn't have, we might not be able to do it again." I mean, when are you, you know, we've had, we've had the children, now the grandchildren, playing in the league under the promise of getting new soccer fields. You know, it's getting a little, it's getting a little crazy. And now you have situations where you have members of the school board, and one candidate for the school board, who's a wife of a former City Council member, advocating selling off the land that these kids play on at schools. So I hope for once they actually stick by, but I'm really, unfortunately, I believe that it's not going to happen. You know, they'll get the approval, but they won't have the money anymore. And the question we should ask is, when we had all these millions and millions and millions of dollars, we couldn't find another million to take care of these kids. Thank you.
Councilmember Sotelo, and I'm going to ask you, please, don't applaud. You're applauding for people against N4, so it's kind of interesting.
What I'm going to say right now is, right now, people are coming up and saying about how we didn't build soccer fields, and how we had the money, but for the first time, we are breaking ground over at Wick's, if you see their demo, and we're going to get the money, and through that money there, we'll be able to have the money for the park dedication fees to create what we're doing. And hopefully, tonight, we can start. I haven't been on the council for 10 years. You're right, I was the Planning Commissioner, and we went through it, and when I was the Community Service Commissioner, when we started it, all right? But I'm here to say tonight is, for the first time, I'm seeing we're breaking ground on our projects that are going to be able to help fund and will fund this project.
Okay, Alyssa Solis.
My name is Alyssa Solis, I am here to support of the rec and club soccer teams in need of a soccer field. I've been playing soccer since I was four. I live in West Covina, and I go to West Covina High School. Me and my family are very proud citizens of West Covina, and so are many of the parents and team members who come out tonight and support the West Covina Youth Soccer League. But many West Covina residents find themselves traveling outside the city and want a better soccer experience. In the past, even though we have had concerns about our soccer fields, we've always had somewhere to play. Now that our soccer community is growing, we are coming across problems and having fields to play and practice on, and the ones we do have are in horrible condition with many bumps and holes creating hazard for our players. So we come to you and help, for help in a solution for more playing fields and better playing conditions. Soccer support is not big enough in West Covina, but the number of soccer players continues to grow. So with your help and support, it will help us resolve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. No applause, please. Art Balin.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Herford, City Council, City Staff. I'm here tonight and speaking behalf of Item 14 on the Agenda. I hope that you recommend and you move forward with all the recommendations or all the three steps that are mentioned in the Agenda by Councilman Sotelo. I want to thank a lot of the parents, a lot of the members here, our young ladies that have come up and spoke in behalf of our league. That should tell you the importance of this project, belong, what it means to our community. It's something that we've been working for a long time, a lot of us here, some of them have been in the trenches with some of the councilmen, and I thank you for that, Mr. Sotelo. You're one of the members that have been in the trenches with me, and you've seen our frustrations and our shortcomings of our league as far as having a place that we call home. Now, it's time for us to build this site, and I hope that you all vote for it. Again, I want to thank the city staff. They've been a major part of asking and working with the leagues, so thank you very much for that. And I want to say thank you for giving us this opportunity to address this to the City Council, and I hope that it goes forward. Thank you.
We have 15 cards left. Some don't have the subject on the card, so is there anybody else that wanted to speak on the soccer item? Okay, please come forward. Shirley Buchanan. She has a card.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Herford and other Council Members. I am in favor of this project. My sons played baseball at Orange Wood, and I'd be very happy to see those, these lovely children back on that field. I want to give a little bit of encouragement to the soccer people, because as you were talking about the Wick's property, we should be able to get some money from the Velinda property. We should be able to get some money from the Charles Company property when he tries to get the rezoning of the office buildings to townhouses. And we, and of course, the Watts, Watts, Wick's, I'm sorry. And it's unfortunate that the wording was in the Agenda that kind of put a little bit of blame that it might not move ahead because of San Bernardino, because there's other property that's being developed. And I appreciate the thought that you really plan to finish and have these kids playing by middle of 2014. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else that put, turned in a card, wanted to speak? Okay, seeing that, we'll move on with the staff report then. Mr. City Manager, Item 14, we'll bring forward, and could we have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Freeland will present that staff report tonight. Good evening, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, Members of the City Council. September is Youth Council, or excuse me, is Youth Soccer Month. Assets before you tonight is a very exciting project for your consideration, the approval of the Orange Wood Park Soccer Complex. Orange Wood Park is located along Merced Avenue, adjacent to West Covina Unified School District's Office, and across the street from Edgewood School. What we'd like to do, the staff would like to share with the public a PowerPoint presentation to talk a little bit of how we got here and where we're going from here, now that we have this project moving forward. So let me start with a little bit of background about the project. As many of you may recall, this project began in 2008, when representatives for West Covina Unified School District, West Covina Youth Council, and other sports groups participated with the city of West Covina in the development of the Orange Wood Park Master Plan Amendment Number Four. This amendment called for the redesign of a significant portion of Orange Wood Park for the development of a soccer complex. And I want to clarify a couple comments a few speakers have made. This is, moving forward tonight, this is not repeating any previous processes that the city has done. Should the City Council move forward this evening, the city is looking to complete construction drawings and actually build these fields as the funds are received. So here is the Orange Wood Park Master Plan that was completed back in 2008. The conceptual plan provides for the following amenities. I'll spend a little bit of time here. We're going to have a large lighted soccer field, a small lighted soccer field, and that's going to allow for, especially on the larger one, to have multiple fields on here. West Covina Youth Soccer was instrumental in helping design this, and so, thank you, Art, I know you're up here somewhere. We will also include playground with park benches, picnic shelters with barbecues. As you can imagine, there's going to be a high demand for this park now with the completion of this project, so we're going to need more parking, so we're looking to expand the parking lot. We're going to look to build additional restrooms, a meeting room, and a snack bar for West Covina Youth Soccer to utilize. And then also ball control netting on the large soccer field, because there are adjacent property uses on the opposite side of the large field, and we don't want to lose those soccer balls. So what we have before you this evening is a little bit, some more actual photos of some of those new soccer fields with the lights, a proposed playground design, which is a soccer-themed playground that we'd like to incorporate as part of that project, new picnic shelters, and new walking paths that will go around the facility. picnic shelters, and new walking paths that will go around the facility. Now here's the actual proposed development schedule that the city staff is bringing forward to you tonight. City staff has broken the Orangewood Soccer Complex into three distinct phases. It is estimated that all three phases of the Orangewood Soccer Complex will cost approximately $4.5 million. Phase one highlighted in yellow is estimated at a cost of $1.8 million. This portion of the project will include the construction of the two new lighted soccer fields and all the site preparation that needs to be done for those soccer fields. So that includes grading, installation of drainage, sprinkler system, et cetera. Phase two highlighted in red is estimated a cost of $1.6 million. This portion of the project includes the expansion of the existing parking lot to meet the increased demand at the park, new picnic shelters, benches, drinking fountains, et cetera. Phase three, which is highlighted in orange, is estimated a cost of $1.1 million. This portion of the project includes the construction of a new park building with the additional park restrooms that we talked about, the snack bar, and other amenities. And the part of phase three is also the new soccer-themed playground. Now, I also want to include that in the cost of each of those different levels is a prorated cost for the overall design and project management. So these are what we believe are inclusive costs for this project. Okay, so knowing this, how are we going to move forward? First, we need to receive funds to pay for this project. The entire project is being funded with park dedication fees generated from new housing developments in West Covina. As developers build new homes in West Covina, they are required to pay a portion of their project to either be dedicated to open space or to provide recreational opportunities in the community. If as part of their project, they're unable to provide that open space, they pay park and louvre fees, which is those park dedication fees. As West Covina is a built-out community, you will see a majority, if not all, of these new developers spending, or actually spending, contributing to the city's park dedication fee program to pay for these new facilities. Right now, there are a couple of small housing projects that are under construction in West Covina. I think a speaker mentioned the new housing project on Velinda and another one on Lark Allen. Actually, those funds are being put into the park dedication fee account to be used specifically for the design of this project. Should the city council move forward with that design and the approval tonight, it's staff's intent to move forward with the actual design and construction of this park. The rendering we show on the PowerPoint before here, this is just a document that's utilized as Mayor Pro Tem Herford talked about as part of just a planning document. But in order to actually build the facility, we need to have the engineers and the architects come out here to make sure that when it rains, it's going to be able to run off all the rain. We're going to make sure that when they install the electrical, that the electrical is going to work so that we have lights for these fields. So once the design is completed, which is the first step in this process, and a sufficient amount of park development funds are received, city staff will then solicit bids to construct phase one of the project, or perhaps multiple phases at one. Mayor Pro Tem Herford spoke about the Leonard Homes project, which is at the Wick's site. That project alone can generate an excess of $3 million in new park dedication fees. That project, we're hoping, will move forward in the next several months, and hopefully we can start receiving those funds. Those funds will help pay for this project, and a significant amount of that project. The final comment I would like to make is, tonight, city staff is seeking the city council approval to do the following. First, approve the three-phase Orangewood Park Soccer Complex development as presented in the staff report. Two, instruct city staff to prepare a request for proposals to hire a consultant to design the proposed soccer complex once a sufficient amount of funds are received. Now, mind you, we already having funds being deposited into these accounts, and we're looking forward to having a sufficient number of funds to move forward the designs here shortly. Don't have a date on here, right tonight, but we are, we're working with the Public Works Department, and we're looking to move that forward as quickly as possible. And third, authorize city staff to begin phase one of the soccer developments once a sufficient amount of park development funds are deposited into the account. City staff will solicit those awarded bids. Once those awarded bids come back, we will come back to the city council for the approval of the construction of phase one or multiple phases if we do receive those additional funds. And that concludes the staff report, and we're here to answer any questions.
Council, have any questions? Councilmember Sotelo.
How much of funds do we have presently in park dedication fees right now? Chris?
I will try and see. We just recently had a deposit of about $23,000 that was just done as part, just a portion of the Brandywine Development. That project alone is going to, has already been approved, is under construction, is going to generate over $216,000 in new park funds. That alone is almost enough money to move forward the design and move this project forward. And I would probably defer to the Public Works Director on the process of how those payments are collected. Currently have $23,000. Right now, we are estimated, based on the housing projects that have either been approved by the planning commission, actually, I'll just focus on the ones approved by planning commission first. We're looking to receive almost $4.5 million in park dedication fees from a few of the housing projects that have been approved by the planning commission, and then additional $600,000 of what has been submitted to the planning commission. And then we have preliminary numbers of over $1 million from additional housing projects that are being discussed with developers.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Public Works Director, can you expound on how the park development fees are paid? Is it when they pull the permit?
Yes, it's generally put in the conditions of approval when they go to the planning commission, and for the most cases, those projects are conditioned so that they have to pay the fees before they pull the building permits. So in the case of the one that Chris mentioned, the Brandywine Homes, they pulled permits for two of the model homes, and that's why we collected only a portion of the funds at this point.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Freeman?
Yeah, City Manager, Mr. Chung has asked, I also expanded a little on park dedication fees for the public's benefit. Park dedication fees, as we mentioned, are paid by developers. They go into a special account that can only be used for capital projects at our parks. So the city does not have the authority to take it out, go spend it on any type of other services we provide, whether it be for police, fire, public works, or the finance operation or the operations of the city. These funds must remain in the city's coffers to be used for capital projects at our parks. So as a community services director, it's very exciting to see these new funds come into our community because not only are we looking to do the soccer complex, but as funds come in, we're looking to do potentially new playgrounds throughout the community and other amenities based on the direction of our city council.
Thank you. All right, this is the time for comments by city council, and we start with Councilman Sotelo since this is your item.
Thank you. As you see, we have the funds, and the funds are going to come in. For the first time, we can see we're having, we have the funds. As you heard, we can't spend these funds on anything else. It is about time we got soccer their home field. I was with U Sports for many years. I've seen you at many parks, many, you know, you go from here to here. You guys keep going to the different parks of West Covina. And I hope tonight, we can move forward, and we can get yourself at home, and we can work on this. But as you can see, it's going to take a little bit of work, and we're getting some money. But you can see it's feasible, and we can start this, hopefully this year, and we can complete it within a year. That way, we're not hearing grandkids and other grandkids coming here. Because my kids play soccer, and I know where you're coming from. So I hope we can support this and support you guys tonight. Because I go, I believe in U Sports, and I believe in the U's. And it'd make me happy if we could start this right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember McIntyre.
Yeah, I think this is a great project. Some of my best friends grew up in this town playing soccer. They were part of the South Hills High School CIF-winning team, and they've told me stories about, when I heard about this project, I inquired about all the soccer conditions in the community, and they explained very similar stories of what you guys were talking about tonight. I think we're moving forward on this project in a prudent manner, attacking it as the funds come in. And I, as you can see from the projects, we've seen some of the demolitions start to occur over at the Wick's site. The monies are going to be here. The houses are starting to get into build over at the Brandywines house, so the way we're going about it with spending the money when it comes in, I think is a prudent thing to do, and it's, I think it's a great project, and it's going to happen, so, or it looks like it can, so it's going to be awesome.
Councilmember Sykes.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Herford. I lived in this city since 1978, and I pretty much lived a private life. I wasn't involved in the city. I wasn't engaged. Then in 2006, I got involved, totally changed my life, and focused on trying to increase the voice of the residents at City Hall. And when I started my march, I live at the south end of town. I live by Nogales High School. And when I came upon the soccer fields, I was taken back. Especially when I saw that it's a coed activity. And I saw that the boys were using porta-potties, but that's okay. But when I saw that the girls were also having to use the porta-potties, and all their visiting teams, I thought about how powerful the headquarter city of West Covina is. But yet and still, we were stuck with this situation where even the little kids were somehow overlooked on the soccer fields. That was a powerful motivation for me, so I've been working to this day and the day that we get the soccer fields built since 2006. And we should not delay. We should vote for this and get it done right away. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. First off, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. This, this item, as I stated, we've been planning since 2008. Sometimes in government, the financing that comes in, it, it goes away too. When redevelopment was taken away from the city of West Covina, we lost, oh gosh, over $12 million to the state of California. Over the last 10 years, the city of West Covina has lost over $30 million. We still have our own police and fire department, we still maintain our streets, and we have beautiful parks. So when park development money comes in, and you've heard that term tonight, in this case, it's through housing. And because new housing is coming into the city, it's offered this opportunity for quite a bit of money to be put back into the parks program. And this council made it a priority since this was something we were working on to bring this item forward and to build the soccer field. So when you see that, as Councilmember Sotelo says, when you see the project next to the Edwards Theater start to go up, that means that there's money coming into the city because as they pull permits, that's more and more park development money. And we anticipate that project's going to go online pretty quick. They're beginning demolition right now, so this is not a pipe dream. This is something that's going to happen. And we have a motion and a second.
We make a motion.
A second.
Moved by Councilmember Sotelo and second by Councilmember McIntyre. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Okay, with that, the project is approved to move forward. We'll take a five-minute break. Thank you for coming. We'll take a five-minute break. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. Thank you for your patience. I know that parents really appreciated that item coming forward. We'll go back to oral communications. First Speaker Carolyn Art. Yes?
I think it's time for a commercial break. Community service announcement. That'll fool ya. My name is Carolyn Art. I have lived here since 1957. I'm delighted to see the staff and the city council here. The West Covina Improvement Association is facilitating, now that is a very magic word because we cannot sponsor nor endorse because we do not have political action kind of identification with the state. And so, on Friday night, September 20th, that's this coming Friday night, at the Brunswick West Covina Bolling Alley, we are following the Rotarian kind of plan because they don't have political action kind of identification either. And some years ago, they did this, and it was very successful. And so we have invited all nine of the city council members, candidates, to meet with us and do 15 to 18 minutes of telling about themselves and their vision for the city. That's the first one that we're going to do. Hopefully, with your support, the League of Women Voters are going to help us to do one here early in October. And Pat is here from the League, and she may talk about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's at 6:30, by the way. I knew you'd tell you that. So you show up, Dr. Important, right? Thank you.
Sheena Heng, I believe it is?
Pardon?
Uh, next speaker, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Good evening, council members. My name is Sheena Heng, and I'm here, I'm a West Covina resident, and I'm here today to let you know that a new cell tower is proposed in my neighborhood at the corner of Baranca and Cameron. On record, my neighbors and I oppose this plan, and we currently have over 100 signatures, petitions that we do not want this tower there. The tower is in a residential area, and we don't want microwave radiating beaming at us 24 hours. It is too close to South Hills High School, and we don't want this microwave radiating beaming at our kids eight to 10 hours a day while they're in school. This is a 60-foot fake tree that it would devalue our property around there. We did not buy our house close, close by an electrical tower or cell tower, and we certainly don't want one built close by us. Our quality of life will go down. Now, this is a diagram to show the different ways in antennas that they could possibly use. Basically, there's one that radiate out, and then there's one that just shoot or beam across. So it doesn't matter if you're a resident that's at this section or at this section, the radiant could be higher even when you're further away from there. So you can live further away from this tower and still get hit with this beam. Now, this tower is seeing microwave radiation, and the World Health Organization has said it causes carcinogen. The U.S. Air Force did a study for 10 years on rat, and they spent over $5 million, and the rats have cancers. Now, study has shown that this microwave radiation caused cancer. Now, the International Fire Association signed a resolution back in 2005 that they don't want this tower on top of their working stations, and we don't want one close by where we're living. LA School did not want the cell tower on their school ground either. Now, this is a residential area, and this is to the resident of West Covina and that lives around that area. Please come to the planning commission's meeting at 7:00 PM next week, which is September 24th, Tuesday. And I have a map here. I have a map here that shows where they're proposing the location of this particular cell, and right, and I live somewhere on this side of town. Now, right across it is a high school. You're talking about, I'm only one or two people that are living in this house, but during the daytime, the school has 1,800 students that they're beaming this thing at our students. And that's all the kids that live on that side of town. Parents of South Hills High Schools, doctors, lawyers, engineers, business professionals, we all live in these areas. This kid go to school here. I need you to come and bring your brain power and voices and let your council commissioner know that we do not want this fake tree to bring our property value down. to bring our property value down and our quality of life down and a possibility to give us cancer to our kids in the near future and to us. We did not buy our home close to a tower, so we don't want one built in our neighborhood neither. Now, I can be reached via email at csw@charter.net. So please contact me and let me know that you want to sign the petition and show up to next week's meeting. We need to protect our house value and we need to protect our quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Philip Marina?
Members of the council, members of the city staff and members of the audience. This is directed to the West Covina City Council and all West Covina taxpayers. And the subject, how much money did the West Covina General Fund recover from the auction of Ziyad Al Hassan's redevelopment property? As a taxpayer, I would like to have a written answer to the following questions. Number one, the city of West Covina first filed suit against Ziyad Al Hassan in 2005. Since that time, how much money has West Covina taxpayers spent on legal fees in regards to this matter? Question number two, how much time has city staff spent or how much money have West Covina taxpayers paid to have city staff deal with this legal matter? Number three, now that the auction of those properties has taken place, I and all West Covina taxpayers want to know how much money was returned to the city's general fund from the auction of Ziyad Al Hassan's redevelopment properties? It'll take a while to get that. And there's a reason why I mention that. Remember that this city council transferred $20 million from the city's general fund to the redevelopment agency. That's $20 million that could have bought a fire truck, $20 million when we went from 128 to 89 police officers, $20 million that we pay taxes for needs, not wants, that could have paid for the six firemen that we're going to lose that are here on a grant. The West, number four, is my fourth question. The West Covina taxpayers deserve to know if the legal firm of Alvarez Glassman made more money than the city of West Covina after all the bills were paid by our redevelopment agency for the Ziyad Al Hassan properties. This litigation went on and on. Mr. Ziyad offered a $7 million payment to the city to stop the litigation and the firm of Alvarez Glassman denied his offer to settle. And this case went on and on. So the taxpayers of West Covina get nothing. But if the firm of Alvarez Glassman, in their best interest, kept litigation going, I want to know how much money they were paid. And in the end, Mr. Ziyad came in and bought all of his properties anyway. Were we taken for a fool? Why was the litigation on and on and on? He offered to settle. Are you saying you didn't know about it, Mr. Hurford? Or two, he didn't know about it? The people who are pushing the moratorium on the South Hills properties for Mr. Ziyad? Two of you are going to ask for, to get elected.
Would you just address me, please? Thank you. Okay, Stephen Box?
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers and city staff and friends and neighbors. My name is Stephen Box. I live on Grove Center and I'm here tonight to ask for your help. The last six months since we moved here, I'm here with my lovely wife and our little boy Sidney. I'd like your help in getting home at night. So in the last six months since we moved to our new home here, I've been experimenting with different transit routes. So I've taken the MetroLink, the 190, the Silver Streak. And I can get to work pretty consistently. But coming home, it varies from tonight 43 minutes to some nights, 2 hours and 40 minutes. And that's when I take the Silver Streak. And the West Covina is one of 21 members of the Joint Powers Authority. So you have a say in the administration, operation and oversight of the Foothill Transit. And I reached a point of frustration that I went to their executive board meeting to watch. But when I heard them give their report, I felt compelled to speak up because the report was so bad. And it consisted of such bad data and it was such a misrepresentation of reality. So as the Foothill Transit just celebrated its 25th anniversary, it's the second largest transit authority in the county. Here's the deal. They run with oral reports. A multimillion-dollar establishment using public funds. And it's not just about me getting home. It's not just about fiduciary obligations and responsibilities. But last week, one of the Silver Streaks crashed on the 10 freeway, demonstrating this is a public safety issue, whether or not you ride the Silver Streak, whether or not it's your responsibility, whether it's just us wanting streets that work for everybody, pedestrians and cyclists and mass transit motorists. So regardless of your perspective, I'm telling you, there's a problem and I'll be short without going into details. And here it is. 128-page report with bad data. Meanwhile, I go to the Metro San Gabriel Valley's Governance Committee last week in 12 pages, two of which were just a waste of space because it was the front page and the back page and there were huge slides. They can give me all the data I know to, all the data I need in order to know how they're operating, whether it's their collision rates, whether it's their on-time rate, whether it's the user experience, bus cleanliness, station cleanliness. They can give me all that in 12 pages, yet the Foothill Transit can't give it to me in 128. And that's when I felt compelled to speak up and start visiting the city councils, the 21 cities that are a part of the Joint Powers Authority. So my request tonight is simple and it has three parts. Number one, would you, as a city council, issue a resolution calling on the Foothill Transit to develop and implement a protocol for the collection of data and the dissemination of data? So that you are getting meaningful data about how they're performing. Number two, would you join me in calling for an Office of Public Accountability at Foothill Transit? And number three, would you join me in calling for the establishment of a position, the independent passengers advocate? I don't have the time, you don't have the capacity and it's not getting done. Those three simple steps would take us a long way to creating a transit authority that operates safely, predictably, gets me home on time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pat Clemens?
Hi, good evening, councilmen. You know, it's election year. And I'm with the League of Women Voters and I'm not a resident of West Covina. And because of that, I am nonpartisan when it comes to elections. And so are my members. This is my husband. His name is Norm Clemens. He was a resident of West Covina and his grandfather was the first mayor of West Covina. So we are familiar with West Covina. Anyhow, we want to do a candidate's forum on October 2nd. We went through the process to the city manager and filled all the paperwork out. And we were told that because I am a non-resident, and he is, that we would have to pay. And our league only has about $2,000 in their savings account. We do this as a service. We, in fact, spend money in a way from our own personal to pay for flyers and programs and everything. And the city manager said that the paperwork is going to go before the city council for you guys to sign off and saying, I've put on there no fees because we can't afford to pay whatever it is that you want. And I have not heard anything back. And so I'm coming here to ask you what's happened on our paperwork.
I think, I think it's coming to the next agenda, but I think it's safe to say that the fee will probably be waived.
Okay.
Do you have any other comments?
Yes, we do have the application in my office. I have not spoken to Ms. Clemens personally. I believe my staff has spoke to her. We did indicate that there would be a charge that in order to waive that, we would, might have to take that to city council and that's what we're currently looking at. So her application is in the city manager's office. It is being processed as far as my staff is handling that. But the, I just want to point out the communications of what currently where we're at. And we will need to get back to you and I apologize that it's taken a little while.
Okay.
It's just that we, you know, we were calculating everything and need to respond back to what is the estimated cost. And then, if so desired, we need to bring that back to council for their consideration, if that's required, if that's required at all.
Pat, you know, because I've been here a long time. I mean, there's a history of the League having the forum, so I don't think there's a problem with that. And whatever costs there is, I think, I mean, I don't think we'd take action tonight or can we? I mean, does it matter?
I don't, I don't believe we can.
It's not agenda.
Okay, so it'll be on the next agenda.
But also, as the city manager, I'm investigating whether or not I have the authority to waive it or whether I have to bring that to council.
No, that's right. He was doing his job and I can't complain. But I just need to know where I stand because I, I need to proceed to start doing invitations to the candidates and we're starting to run out of time. So I need to know where we stand. That's all.
I think it's going to happen, so I don't know that.
Okay.
We can't make a vote tonight because it's not on the agenda, but I feel pretty confident from my seat that.
Okay. Do you know how soon we would know anybody?
I am hoping that we can try to resolve this as soon as possible. I should probably have some answers this week.
Okay.
So I will have to follow up on that.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. We'll get to you, Pat.
Yeah, I do have that. Your phone number is on the application, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you, guys. Dana Sykes?
Good evening, Mayor Portman, councilmembers, staff, as well as the audience. November 5th is election time. By the way, this message is nonpartisan, nor am I endorsing any candidates. I am talking about voting. We have a right and it's actually a privilege compared to many, many countries to vote. If you complain about anything in government, then you know what? First question is asked a person? Do you vote? No? Well, then if you don't vote, shut up. We have to do our job. We have to vote. By the way, just one way for people to think about it. We, the voters, are the employers. The people at the dais are our employees. We need to do our job and make sure we have people in all branches of office that are working for the residents, working for the people, doing what's best for us. As employers, we make sure those employees are held to standards. That's why we come to council meetings. That's why we get in touch with the people we are electing. We need to do our job. We need to get out and we need to vote. November 5th, local elections, school boards are the most important elections in our election system. Local elections, police, fires, streets, sewers, you trash. Everything you have in your house is because of the city. It goes through the city. We have to have people that are working for our best interests. Same thing for the school boards. Schools aren't run right? Well, you know what? People that are elected by us, the employers, those employees are supposed to be looking out for our kids. So we need to get out to the polling place. If we can't, if someone gives you excuse, "Oh, I'm too busy to vote", tell them to vote absentee. Bottom line is, we need to get out. We need to vote. We need to make sure we got people that are working in our best interest at every level. So if you don't know, if you know people that don't vote, make sure they vote. Vote, 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 vote. Kids depend on us. The elderly depend on us. And we should depend on each other. We're the boss. Make sure we do our job.
Okay, thank you. And, and I agree, Dana. And city clerk, in this election, last election, there were some polling places that were just so hard to find for residents. I want to make sure that this time that we hold the county accountable to where those polling places are, make sure they're well lit. I remember one at South Hills High School that was dark in the back. You wouldn't even know it was there. So let's make sure that we offer the people the place to vote that is a friendly environment that's close to their homes. So Bruce Leinbach?
First of all, I want to talk about the debate. I guess basically, most of it's been covered. In other words, I want to get a reassurance I have fairly strong. I mean, because I called the city, the city manager's office and they couldn't give me an accurate answer. And I guess it's way, way it shapes. You can't give a hundred percent. But I'm taking the, I have a confidence in the council that we can have a debate. I'm talking about the one on Projectors October 2nd. I remember about four years ago. I can't remember what happened, but couldn't use the council chambers. Got to go over to West Covina High. And I thought it was a debate that here, there's no reason why they couldn't have had it. But they didn't have it. I just hope it doesn't, got real convoluted and didn't happen. But I just feel better it's going to happen this year. I just wanted to say, the debate is a great process in our democracy. I just want to hope that it goes through. I'm confident that it is. So I just, just express my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Trudy Saltmarsh?
Thank you for the use of this. It's great help. I can hear everything now.
Super.
One thing that I want to comment on is that last time I was here, there was a suggestion that the crime that we're experiencing in the city comes from outside. Now, that's partly true, but it's not entirely true. Some of the perpetrators have been traced back to the complex that we've been most concerned about in my neighborhood. And that is the complex that is the townhouses that are on Amar Facing Temple. And I'm very happy to see that you have on your agenda items 15 and 16 regarding the concerns that myself and my neighbors have had for some time about the crime that's been going on in our area. I can't, I can't address it stronger, that I, I hope you take it seriously and that you do vote that through. I personally, after 40 years in this community, have felt the need to put in a security system. I've never had one before. I never felt the need for one before. But I put one in now. But again, if we don't have enough police officers and the crime rate keeps going up, who's going to come when my alarm goes off? You know, so it is very dependent. I may do my part in getting this in because I can afford it. But we need the, we need enough police officers and we need a crime rate low enough that, you know, it works for me. Now, I want to speak about one other thing, having to do with the items you have on the agenda. I worked in banking for 30 years. I retired as a regional manager from a bank. I can tell you that banking has gone from the community activity where they cared about the community, where they were involved in the community. I originally worked for a small SNL right across the street from the mall down here. And we cared about the community. We didn't just make loans and then foreclose on those properties and forget about them. We didn't work that way back then. Today, these are big national, international corporations. They don't care about us. They have no involvement in our community whatsoever. And I can tell you from being on the inside, they will not spend one penny. They don't have to, to look after the properties they acquire. And they will try to sell them as is and they'll only fix them up if it's the only way they can sell them. Okay? So if we don't have regulations in place that will force them to look after these properties that are on the books, they're not going to be looked after. Okay? So I do urge you to take those items, 15 and 16. So I do urge you to take those items, 15 and 16, very seriously that's on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Lenore Carvahal?
My name is Lenore Carvahal, and I want to just say a few words about the paseo, the lighting at the paseo on back of Woodgate. We just got recently one light, and I want to thank you because it looks really, really nice. It's bright, and I thank you very much. But we need to put more on the, along the paseo, so I, please, can you do it as soon as possible? Because it's really, really dark, and to tell you the truth, I'm very scared. So thank you for all your help.
Okay, thank you. Irene Gomez?
My name is Irene Gomez, and I am a resident of West Covina. I have been since 1990. Behind us is the paseo that leads to Greenridge Park. And that is our problem, the paseo and the hill back there. We've had problems in the past, people hiding up there in the bushes, people go up there drink, to drink, and we can hear them cussing because our backyard is right here, the hill, the paseo is here, the hill is behind us. They can see us, we can't see them. So we did have a meeting last month with the chief of police, Paul, I can't say his last name, yes, thank you, and Shannon Yahtzee, to try to resolve some of these problems we have been having in the paseo and the hill back there. And so far, yes, we've gotten one light put up. Yay. It is bright. It looks very nice. I just hope that they continue because we need these, this light along the paseo, and I would love more lighting on the hill. We need at least, at least eight to 10 lights along the paseo. I guess, you know, whatever, whatever you can do for us, we would really appreciate. We were, we were promised also the trespassing signs. I've seen one sign. My neighbor said she's seen two other signs by the park. I'm hoping that you could get more signs on the hill. And I also have noticed more police car patrolling, which is great. What else? I hope that doesn't stop the police patrolling because I, I do feel safer now. I want to live comfortable, comfortably at my home, and feel safe because that is my home. That is my sanctuary, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Lola Finley?
Hi, council members and staff. I'm here, I'm also that same area, and I'm glad it's on the agenda, 15 and 16. Just hoping to hear, I should say, Shelley Sanders, Mayor Shelley Sanders' secretary did call, but we haven't scheduled an appointment, and I just wanted to let them know, give me three dates, and we can set an appointment to go over a model for the rental property. I did get what Covina has in addition to what I had sent you guys, but it's basically pretty simple, and I'm hoping we can meet and we can get some kind of rental ordinance going, with or without fees, however you guys want to do it, I'm okay with it. I just think in order to keep it enforced, we need code enforcement people, and it sounds like from tonight, we don't have a whole lot of money, so I think fees may be the only way we can hire more court enforcement people. So on that, that's number 15, 16. On 15, on security measures, I just want to say, you know, we've been really happy, you know, Lenore went to court, and the police department's just been wonderful, 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 wonderful. And, and, you know, I want to thank Paul, not Paul, Shannon Yahtzee for putting the lights in. If we can get, he told me six weeks for all the lights to be in. If we can get, you know, more of a, a location where the lights are off, and I haven't talked to Shannon, so he, this is all new to him, what I'm asking for. I, I know I can send him an email, but I'd like to kind of say it here. If we can get locations of where the lights are going on in the park and in the paseo, and, and just kind of keep, as they're going in, maybe you can give us a notice, a call, personal call to let us know so we can go out there. I know when they put the signs at the park, and it may just be me, my husband felt they were fine, Shannon felt they were fine, but they had paths, and they started putting the signs in front of the paths, they put it to the side. And, you know, some of our kids, you know, they, they see a path, they want to go up, they see the sign, and it's where the foliage is, they're thinking you, they want you to stay out, we want them to stay out of the foliage, not necessarily the, the path. And the only reason why I say that is because I've seen the kids go up there. I've told them, and I felt comfortable telling them, and then when I don't feel comfortable, I've called the police. But if we, if we have pathways, I think the sign should be put in front of the pathways, not to the left, not to the right, in front of the pathways, because, you know, whoever they are, the people who are out there, they're not going to read the signs, you know, if it's not in front of their eyes, so that's number 15. And, and then this, I know I'm not supposed to address a particular person, but we went and looked at the rental property over on Temple and Amar, and they were going to get back to me regarding the rental property, and I was wondering if we found out who manages those rental properties, and, and so we can see about them hopefully working with us in conjunction with this ordinance, and, oh, this is to me really important. When, when, when the person went to court, her backyard was tagged with this really scary comment on, on her back. The police were notified. I didn't even tell her till after the court date what was on her fence. The graffiti person came out, and he made me aware that when they take the picture, that there's a GPS attached to the picture, goes to the police, they file it. I've never known that, and I don't think the residents know that, and I, hopefully, in the newsletter that goes out to the city, I think every month, we should put that in there to let the residents know it's not a waste of their time calling when there's graffiti, that there is a GPS attached to that information, and that, that you can, there's a good chance of you catching the persons who tagged that because, you know, they're tagging multi-places. So I think if we put that in there in conjunction, I know you have the phone number, but also let them know there's a rhyme and a reason why we have that information, why you're calling, and, and I think that's important. Let me see. Oh, on our back wall, because they keep on tagging it, we were hoping to see if the city, and we would paint it ourself, but if the city can provide us, because what's happening, we're getting a patchwork, we're kind of looking like downtown LA in our area, and so what we were hoping is to get paint from the city so we can paint all those walls on the paseo and the entrance, and then when the graffiti guy comes.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor Protem Speaker, see, there are five minutes.
If we can get that paint.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll have Public Works Director talk to you about that stuff.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And I, I see no problem putting the GPS issue in the newsletter. I think we could do a, actually do a story on our graffiti abatement program because I think it's pretty good. Phil Kaufman?
Mayor Protem, council members, staff. I hadn't planned on speaking tonight, but when Mr. Hereford mentioned the events of yesterday's incident at the Naval Yard in Washington, I thought a bit more needed to be said about the issue. Yesterday's events brought back memories of so many mass shootings that have occurred across the country in just the last two or three years, from Phoenix to Aurora, Colorado, to the Seek Temple in Wisconsin, and to Newtown, Connecticut, and the Sandy Hook Elementary School. In particular, that horrific event led so many Americans across the country to think that our elected officials, our employees at the federal, the state, and the local level would do something to prevent this type of incident from occurring again and again and again as it has. On the federal level, Congress has refused to do even the simplest thing in past meaningful background check legislation. In fact, the shooter yesterday has a history of mental instability, gun violence, and yet he walked into a Virginia gun store just a couple of weeks before and walked out with the shotgun he used for yesterday's incident. On the state and local level, we do have one vehicle, we have the gun buyback programs. We've talked about having one in West Covina for more than six months now. It hasn't happened yet, and I hope it will happen, and I hope it will happen soon. Across the country, more states have passed legislation making it easier to purchase guns than have passed legislation making it more difficult. The states of North Carolina and Arizona, in fact, this year, have passed legislation that has destroyed the entire concept of the gun buyback program. The purpose of gun buyback programs is to get guns off the street, and yet in these two states, just two weeks ago in North Carolina, they passed legislation that makes it illegal to destroy guns that are acquired in buyback programs. The law in North Carolina now says that guns that are acquired in buyback programs can be disposed of in three ways. They can be used by the police, they can be sold to gun dealers, or they can be given away. Before more states enact legislation like that, something needs to be done. We can start on a small level here with the buyback program we talked about, but it's time for our elected officials, for our employees around the country to do something meaningful. Every day that nothing is done, more Americans lose their lives, their lives. Since the Sandy Hook incident last December, 12,800 Americans have died from gun violence. It's time for this to stop.
Thank you. Lloyd Johnson?
Lloyd Johnson, resident of West Covina for more than 40 years. Council members and residents of West Covina. Tonight, I'm here to respond to a situation that happened at the last council meeting, and it happened again tonight. What I would like to know is how many of our council members really know what the Brown Act is and what violates the Brown Act? After the last council meeting, I have come to the conclusion, even our city attorney must not understand all aspects of the Brown Act. Let's all understand, just because a city council has a policy, that doesn't mean it's right. Denying a resident the right to ask a council member a question without going through the chair is a violation of the Brown Act. I understand our council deferring to the city attorney when they don't understand the Brown Act. However, our city attorney should understand all aspects of the Brown Act. At this time, I would like to read an article that was in the Daily News on March 7th, 2013. And it states, Alhambur, the Los Angeles County District Attorney's Office, has ruled Councilwoman Barbara Messina violated the Brown Act when she stopped a community member from criticizing another council member at a meeting in October. In a letter to the Alhambur City Council Assistant Deputy of DA Public Integrity Division, Jennifer Lynch Snyder said, Messina violated the state open meeting law at a council meeting just before the November election, when a member of the public attempted to make comments that were critical of a council, Councilman Steve Placido, who was running for reelection. As the community member Ada Zealer began to speak to Placido about comments he made to the press, Messina cut in saying that the members of the public cannot directly address council members other than the chair. Because we are in election cycle, your comments need to be directed to the chair, Messina said. You can't speak to him after the meeting. Messina said she did not think the incident was a violation of the Brown Act, but she, but she did not think, tells dealers she couldn't speak, but only that she had to address her comments to Messina instead of Placido. It wasn't that I didn't allow her to speak, our policy has been that you don't directly talk to council people, you address the chair. She got ticked off because I said she had to direct her comments to the chair, and she turned around and left, Messina said. I can't believe somebody felt the need to report that. Snyder said, after investigating a complaint into the matter, the DA's office ruled Zealer should have been allowed to speak despite the council's policy. We therefore conclude that the restriction of Ms. Zealer's comments, which were critical of a member of the council, though cloaked in premise of a procedural rule, amounted to a content-based restriction that violated the Brown Act, Snyder said. However, Snyder said, the DA's office does not anticipate that the issue will happen again, and so no further action on this matter will be taken at this time. Placido, who is now mayor, said, Messina's action at the meeting were not done out of malice, and the city attorney read a statement apologizing for the incident at the next council meeting. We all try our very best to abide by it, and we take it very seriously, but maybe this was a mistake she made, and the city attorney apologized for it. He said, I, it was a minor slip. I think the crime fits in punishment. Your policy is wrong. I would hope in the future, you will abide by the rules and not violate the Brown Act any further on these matters, and just like the city attorney did tonight. He violated the Brown Act when he told a member he couldn't address one of the council members. I hope it doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Okay, Ray Hernandez?
My name is Ray Hernandez, and I'm a 28-year-old resident. What that means is I've been paying taxes for 28 years, if nothing else. The reason for my presence tonight is to bring to your attention the ongoing substandard West Covina web streaming broadcast. After the city invested over $75,000 using PEG funds, public educational funds, to upgrade the web streaming equipment, at no cost to the residents or the general fund, we continue to broadcast with one fixed wide-angle camera. Why? At the July 16 to 13 council meeting, 19 auto communication speakers were recorded with one camera angle showing only person's backs. At the August 16, 2013 West Covina council meeting, 14 auto communication speakers were recorded with one camera angle showing, again, only the person's backs. A total of 33 speakers showing only their backs, including the West Covina Police Chief and former mayors Kathy Howard and Forrest Tendon. This is not representative of a quality broadcast, is not acceptable. I do agree that we've come a long way with the new equipment upgrades. It's a great improvement, but we still have a way to go here. Now, with this being said, I'm not here tonight to throw Chris Freeland under the bus. It's his responsibility to manage all the camera angles correctly. This man wears many hats. He's on overload. The council needs to provide him relief and mitigate these problems for him. Many solutions have been brought up with council ignoring most. I challenge this council to come up with answers and solutions, such as part-time independent contractor employee, staff members joining in with this assistance, interns, others, it's quite open. Solutions are there. Additionally, we need to, we need the ability to focus on council members' faces when they address the residents, which would require camera zooming capabilities. Recently, I, I surveyed about 12 local cities, and they all are operating with zooming of cameras, and you can see all the council members' faces when they're speaking to the residents. In closing, I'd like to see council members embrace solutions, not embrace excuses. Thank you for your courtesy and attention.
Thank you.
Ariane Fleck?
Good evening. First, I'd like to commend the participants that came to support a home field for their soccer. It's tough to do, and they did a good job. And also, I commend the Paseo people for coming in and talking about their problems, too. I don't have a problem. It's the library. The library, of course, has problems, but we solve them over there. September's half over, but the library programs are not. But let me just focus on one thing that's of special interest to me, particularly when we talk about the physical activity, and this is the academic activity. The library has a reading program and a storytime for all age groups, for the youngsters. And for example, storytime, they have a storytime for the babies to 18 months, then they have a storytime for 18 months to three years, and then they have a storytime for three years to eight. But the thing that I think is really fun is they have a book club for kids kindergarten through second grade, and they have a book of the month, and they can either read the book or come listen to it. And I think that this is great, and they're having a wonderful, wonderful time. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay, that concludes oral communications. Move on to the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar, or any items to be pulled?
A move to approve the consent calendar?
A motion moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Item carries four zero. Public hearings, fee and charges. This matter set for public hearing consists of adopting a resolution in the city council setting an increasing certain fees and charges. City clerk, will you verify the proper legal notice has been given?
Yes, that's verified.
At this time, I'll show up in the public hearing on this matter. There will first be the presentation, the staff report, then we shall hear comments from the public. Mr. Chung, who will present the staff report?
Ms. Nita McKay will present tonight's staff report.
Okay.
Thank you. Mayor Protam, members of the city council. Item number 13 before you this evening is to adopt certain changes to the city of West Covina's fees and charges. Each year, the city departments take a look at all of our fees and charges of the city to make certain that we are fully recovering our costs, that we do not exceed the cost of providing the services, and that we are charging specific individuals or groups that are benefiting from these services and not being subsidized by general taxpayers. The complete fee schedule is attached in Exhibit A, and it is color-coded for your benefit. The changes are highlighted in gold, and the new fees are highlighted in yellow. I'm going to briefly go through the changes that are proposed to the fee and charge schedule, starting with community development services, planning fees. We are recommending an increase in the deposit requirement, as well as a reevaluation of actual staff time in providing the services so that we can once again recoup the cost of providing those services. We are proposing and recommending a new proposed fee, a planning surcharge for plan checks. This fee will be charged when an applicant pays for a building plan check, and the planning department staff spend a significant amount of time, which we are recouping the cost of that time spent by staff. It is additionally recommended that we increase building fees. The last increase to the building fees was made in July of 2008. Staff is recommending a 2% fee increase, and it's warranted to fully recover the cost of providing these services. It will encompass building permits, mechanical fees, electrical permits, and plumbing permits. The hourly rate for building inspector-deputy building official and in-house plan checks is also being increased by $1 to $2. Under the category of public safety services, staff is proposing an increase to several permits. This is an increase in the staff time in providing these permits: solicitation, games of skill or science, pet store hypnotist, fortune teller, massage therapist, and the mobile food vendors and vehicle for hire. There is one proposed new fee under public safety. It is for a one-time fee for owners of a massage establishment who do not personally provide massage services. For police fees, we are recommending to fully recover costs. We are charging proposed fees of additional for false, police false alarm response, stored abandoned vehicle release, and DUI arrest and report. Under our fire department fees, we are requesting or proposing that specific fire permits, plan checks, and inspections be increased, and staff is also recommending an additional charging 10% of building plan checks instead of the hourly flat rate that was charged in the past. Ambulance rates, you will see an increase there, and these are aligned directly with the County of Los Angeles' general ambulance rates, which are adjusted twice a year on Consumer Price Index factors. Leisure and cultural services in our community services department, staff is proposing fee increases for daycare, preschool, group swimming class programs, which are currently being subsidized by the general fund. Once again, we are proposing to recoup our costs. There are certain other items listed that we are increasing or proposing to increase the rental rates for the city's community room, Cameron Park Community Center rooms, and park gazebos and picnic pavilions. Additionally, the Dial-A-Ride-and-Go-West fares are recommended to increase 50 cents. Staff is recommending this to be increased by $1 per hour for staff time. Under finance and administrative services, business license application reviews are proposed to increase by $3 per application. As you can see by the resolution that you will be approving this evening, these fee increases will go into effect on October 1, 2013, with the exception of the Dial-A-Ride-and-Go-West fares, which will be effective January 6, 2014. The proposed fee schedule, the changes to our fees and charges, will provide additional revenue on an annual basis of $300,000. That is the estimate. $226,000 will be additional revenue directly to the general fund to fund general fund services. And that concludes my presentation this evening. The department heads are all available to answer questions on specific fees and charge increases, and I'm also available.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of staff? Okay, seeing none, I will now open the public comment portion of the hearing. I have no cards, so seeing no one that wants to speak, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing, and I will ask for council discussion. Any discussion? Do we have a motion?
I move to accept staff's recommendations to approve this and increase our fees accordingly.
Okay, that's a motion to adopt the resolution, then. Do we need to have a heading in the resolution or not?
That's Resolution Number 201362, a resolution of the city council of the city of West Covina, California, setting an increasing certain fees and charges.
It's moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries four zero. Okay, next item on the agenda is the successor agency. Roll call, city clerk.
Chairman Sanderson, Vice Chairman Hertford.
Here.
Board Member McIntyre.
Here.
Board Member Satello.
Here.
Board Member Sykes.
Here.
Changes to the agenda? I don't think there are any. You know what? What am I looking at here? Okay, that's it. We don't have oral communications. I didn't realize we had that on there. Seeing no cards, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion approved.
Moved and moved by Satello, second by Sykes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries four zero. Any comments from the successor agency board? Do we have a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn.
Moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, we're adjourned. We already had item 14, which passed. We'll move on to item 15. This is a request from Mayor Shelley Sanderson, seeking the council's support to instruct city staff to prepare a report on security measures for the Paseo behind the 1800 block of Woodgate Drive. Does council wish to move forward, even though Mayor Sanderson's not here? City manager? Okay.
I'm sorry, let me finish that question first.
Since it's a mother may I, I believe, is that right? You're going to come back with more information?
It is a mother may I, but staff did prepare a presentation before we can explain to you what has been done.
Sure.
So if we can provide that.
Yeah, let's do that.
Thank you, mayor, member of the city council. We have a little slideshow tonight, and we'll show you some of the improvements that we've already done and that we are doing to help the police department enforce the rules and regulations around the area of Gingrich Park and Woodgate and the Paseos surrounding the homes of the residents. Any of who spoke tonight? We have posted additional park rules signs in the park and in the Paseos. There are Paseos that lead into the parks, and those entrances did not previously have park rules or park hours signed, so this will notify the public that the park is closed after 10 o'clock at night. We've also added no trespassing signs. We worked with the police department to make sure we had adequate spacing, and the size of the signs are proper. And unfortunately, there's lots of paths up here. There's probably three or four right here, so we tried to put those where they were visible, and it is pretty clear if you walk up to that area, you can actually see these signs from the street. So it's pretty clear that this is a no trespassing area, and this is a tool for the police department to use. Unfortunately, some kids will read it and go on up there anyways, but this is a tool that allows the police department to remind them that they're not allowed to be up there conducting mischief, or we've had some people up there drinking, and the police department can now cite those people if they're found up there. There was, years ago, some erosion on one of the slopes, and the contractor at the time put in some railroad ties to resolve that erosion. Sort of became a step, and the kids used it as a trail to get up and down this slope. So that's something that we've removed and we're replanting. Actually, in last budget year, the city council approved maintenance district funds to replace the lighting, so we're fortunate that we have ordered and actually received most of the 40-some lights that are going in in this area. You see the old lights. We're going to be replaced with these really high-efficient energy LED lights. They're very bright. We put in a test case about a year ago on Woodgate. The residents all went and looked at it and very happy with it. So this gives you an overview of the area. You've got the park here. Many of the residents' homes live in this area or across the street. You have a Paseo that leads behind their homes, and goes all the way up to Amar. And this is a slope, so these homes are lower than these homes up on Altamira. So unfortunately, what some of the kids were doing is, on their way to the park, they would go up onto these swales, walk across the top over here, and then come back down, or they'd go up where the railroad ties were. Sometimes they'd get into mischief, or drink, or smoke, or break glass, or whatever. So we've added some sample locations of the new park rules signs. We also did it in some of the other areas where Paseos lead into the park. We've got the no trespassing signs to let people know to stay off of that slope. And then basically, these white dots are the existing Paseo lighting, so each existing light is being replaced with the new energy-efficient and extra-bright LED light, all behind their homes and all the way up to Amar. In addition, further this way on Woodgate, where we did the test case, we're going to be able to extend probably another 10 or 15 lights in that area, too. So that's sort of a summary of what we've done so far. We were lucky, we had predicted six or eight weeks to get those lights in. We found a place that had them in stock, so they've already been delivered to the yard. We're working with the contractor to get those installed, probably within the next couple of weeks. That should be done.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff from the council? Okay, the motion is to request the city council's support to instruct staff to bring a report back on security measures in addition to what we've heard tonight, so do we have a motion to approve? This is a mother may I to bring back a report. Moved by Satello.
Second.
Second by McIntyre. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. Item 16 is a companion item to this item, seeking the city council's support to draft an ordinance modeled after the city of Covina's rental housing permitting and inspection program. Do we have a motion? Moved by Satello.
Second.
Second by McIntyre. This is a mother may I, so this will come back to the council for action. City manager, do you have a comment?
Yes, I just want to point out that the model that we would bring back, an ordinance that models the Covina ordinance, but would be tailored to West Covina, and that may not have all the specific elements contained with Covina model, because they also had other departments involved, and we want to concentrate on code enforcement and try and identify the issues based on that. So I just want to let you know that that is our recommendation, and of course, you can change that later on, but that's what we're looking to provide.
Councilman McIntyre?
Can I add one thing? In their ordinance, they also include commercial properties, and it created, in my experience with property management up in Covina, a nightmare for their staff. They didn't quite understand. There was such a backlog of code enforcement people to go out and review the different properties that they were actually holding up businesses from opening, and they realized that there was a problem with that system that they had in place, so they, I believe, suspended it, or at least didn't take it as seriously. I don't know where they're at in their process, but just take that into consideration as far as the commercial real estate side of things.
This ordinance would just focus on rental housing.
Cool.
Okay, and I would like to see the residents involved, and the police department, and our public works department, and any of the departments that... I think it's one of these issues that needs everybody's input. Let's make sure we get it right the first time.
Correct, and I apologize for not addressing that as well. It is our recommendation to reach out to the businesses and get their feedback on this as well.
Even though it's residential only?
The residential property owners.
Okay.
To get their feedback on drafting this ordinance, to make sure that they understand it, and include any feedback they may have.
Okay, all right. With that, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Any other council member, city council comments? Would you like to say anything? Okay, we have some adjournments tonight. Like to adjourn, first off, a good friend and a longtime councilwoman here for the city of West Covina and mayor Nancy Manners. She passed away a couple of weeks ago. Served, the first woman on the city council, served from 1984 to 1996. Served as mayor in 1988 and 1992. And anybody that knew Nancy, loved Nancy because she was a caring person that took time to meet with you and was just a breath of fresh air. So anyways, she will be missed in our community. Also, West Covina Police Department records clerk Mona Clark. We're sad to see one of our employees pass away. She will be missed in the department, and I know that the police department is supporting her and her family, so we will miss Mona. Former Community Services Department staff member Charlene Casanova. Many people know Ed and Charlene. They lived in the community a long time. They had subsequently moved to Palm Springs, but we're in our thoughts and prayers. So to each of these, we adjourn in their memory. Sure, go ahead, Fred.
If I may, sir, I'd like to also add another name. He was a resident, was involved in a tragic traffic collision that happened on the Sunday, August 18, and he clung to life until September 3. And that is Mr. Raymond Lowey was involved in a motorcycle versus auto collision.
What was his name? Raymond?
Raymond Low, L-O. Raymond Low, L-O.
Councilor Satello.
Also, Ray Gonzalez passed away this last week. I was telling you, you work for the city, you work for the city, and you're a community department.
For many years. I'd like to, and Ray?
Okay. So we will adjourn in memory of former mayor Nancy Manners, West Covina Police Department records clerk Mona Clark, community services staff member, former staff member Charlene Casanova, Mr. Raymond Low, and Ray Gonzalez. Do we have a motion?
I move.
Moved.
Second.
And seconded. All those in favor, say aye.